All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the first meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees of 2023. My name is Michael Dunn, I'm the president of the library board. It's great to be with you all today. All right, we're gonna try this again. Okay. We are going to keep going. Let's see. Sharon, can I get a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay.
I can hear most things. It's the if it's not, if you're not right next to the microphone, it sounds a little bit like it's underwater and it's hard to understand.
Thank you for your patience, everybody. We have a firm here. Call to order and get things moving. We're very excited to welcome you to bring us to our group. Thank you all for joining us. And so to start things off today, I would like us to go around. Please introduce yourself. I'd like to share more interest in working with the library. And please share the best way to help. Your name, your interest in helping out the library. So we can go around the floor here. Sharon, can I put you on the hot seat? Can you go first?
Absolutely, I'm Sharon Fitzsimmons. I'm new. I am interested in working with the library to see about how we can continue the outreach that the library has had. We've been residents here in St. Mary's for about 10 years and we've really appreciated library services. Say it again, please.
Holiday people enjoy the most.
What holiday do I enjoy the most? Thanksgiving? Because it's very low responsibility and lots of good food.
Really enjoy that work in my very. Being part of my very.
Need to answer my own questions. Michael Dunn, I'm the president as of this month. And I really love supporting the library because it's an incredible community resource that provides so many resources. And they have such an exciting innovation support. And it's the most important here. And over the holidays, I think most satisfying were some good old stuff shelves. Christmas Eve. On Josh.
Welcome back to the library. The one that staffed. All of you. She go. The holiday. I'm going to. Salt. Red leg.
Thank you, everyone. So let's moving on in the agenda. The first item is the approval of the December 2022 minutes, which are in your packet. Does anyone have any questions? Should we have any discussion about those minutes? I got a motion to approve the minutes. John, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor, please say aye. Sharon, raise your hand, please. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstained? All right, motion carries, thank you. The next item under the president's report is approval of the EALs for the last month. This is the record of the transactions that the library has had in the month before our meeting. So again, these are found in your board packet. And now is a great time, if you have any questions about what's listed here, we can talk about them and get some more information. After any discussion, we can have a motion. John, that's a great question. I would like to phone a friend.
Online, we couldn't hear what the question was, sorry.
What does EAL stand for? These are the library resources. Trying to find what you want to get. Oh, actually, things. It's. Yeah, we're trying, sorry, we're doing, we know what it stands for. But basically, these are expenses. And we're just over seeing those. And just ask that you, if you have any questions about any items, what they are, sometimes the. The. That's my music, what's that one for? And then we can. For example, the first one is. And answer the personal. Typically, you'll find electric bills. Expenses grow to revenues. Anything that we do that like solid. We have an arrangement with. Comes nearby. Fill up. That's. Gale is responsible to. So. Basically. Those statements is.
I do have a question. See. Should welcome.
Yes, they will be. So I need to remember. That they those will. So that should. They said this. Just. I had a question about the care first cross expense. Is that? Is that a quarterly, an annual, monthly? That is. And that is accounting. There are no more questions or discussion about the EALs. Charlotte Hall is the. And so you will sometimes see patients tall, Leon. Yes, we do. Any other questions about the EALs besides what they stand for? Can I get a motion to approve the EALs? Show move. Thank you, John, second. Thank you, Jessica. All in favor of approving the EALs, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right. Okay. Right. All right, very curious, still on.
I'm here because I'm rotating Mars Pearl. I have represented St. Mary's County for church, so it's called Smurla Board. I joined it very much. So I would like very much.
We need not buy a team, not in person yet, but we use teams and we meet on the second Tuesday of every month at.
I actually can't hear anything that's going on in the room, but I would like to propose a meeting time after work hours, if possible, if that's what we're discussing right now. I'm getting in my car to drive down there right now, but I'm supposed to be at work and setting an extra half hour.
Okay. I don't think we should have a warm, so we'll keep going. So can you continue?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So that is one of the things that I'm here for today is just to tell you that I hope very, very much that one of you would decide to represent St. Mary's County Board at the Smurla Board. And it's a very good, good thing to do. We have a new CEO. Her name is Ashley Teague and she is just tremendous. She's doing many wonderful things for the Southern Maryland Regional Library Association. The other thing I wanted to mention today was that the state law that governs Smurla will be changing in this coming legislative session. It probably will be taken up in April. And there will be a big change. The big change will be that we will be looking for community representatives to be on the Smurla Board. They will not be from the three library boards. Although the library boards will certainly still be represented, but the law will encourage us to put community representatives on the Smurla Board that are not on the library, the county library boards. So our big task right now at Smurla is to develop a packet that will go online at Smurla that will tell people about this change in the law and also provide an implication. We would encourage people here to sell this to the community people. We're thinking people like friends would be might be interested in it. The foundation members would certainly might be interested in coming on Smurla. But it's an, it's an effort to broaden the board's representation, certainly to go beyond the three library boards to the communities. It will be a big change and we're working hard to enact that. That's what I'd like to report today. Can I answer any questions?
So, because I understand that the representation for the county is going from three to two. Is that right?
Not necessarily. There could be more than one community rep. So.
It what's the.
It's flexible. I would say.
Or for any.
Three, I would say, yes.
And what you said is a member of this board, yes or no, one of those threes could be one of the three or not at all.
It's, it must be one of three.
Okay.
It must be. The library board must be represented on Smurla. And that's what I've been doing.
And then the county representation will pick up the other two seats.
That's right.
Thank you.
It's a change. It don't take a while to get.
Is that the only change that should develop this?
Yes, that's the only change that will, that we're involved with. There's other state changes that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. So the bottom line is that we do need one of our group of board members to serve on the Smurla Board, which again is the Southern Maryland Regional Library Association that brings together St. Mary's, Charles and Cowbert County libraries. The group has a very dynamic new leader who's doing amazing work. So it's, it's an exciting moment to work with that body. And they meet online once a month, the second Tuesday of the month at five P M. So I'm asking the art trustees, please consider if you have the bandwidth to take on this responsibility and represent us and the county to this organization that is a crucial resource for us, for the library. All right, thank you, Beth. Thanks too. All right, so let's pass things on to Michael for the directors' report.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple of things to add here. The first is a date to remember and that is going to be January 31st. Just found this out. On January 31st to Tuesday, that will be eight thirty A M. The county is having a celebration of its citizen volunteers, which will do this for. So if you want to come on out, then immediately following that, there will be the awards for the, the little citations that each board member will get. So typically, if you're not there, I'll get your citation for even bigger to one of our trustee meetings. But if you do wish to come, then it's just an opportunity to meet us other folks, including the commissioners and have received your award. And the other, John, I, you, you provided some things for us. So we'll try to find time to get those as well. And, and will those require approval or is it just information?
That is just information. Has, I'm going to bring this up today to the new people. You've already heard about the notion of moving away from assets actions with the open account. Well, that means you have to have some business going. So I have asked local jobs Saturday. Would be from a primary challenge in CHT10, which you would probably recognize more readily if I said the reference to my federal credit union. Name is Colleen Wondell. I have given her a copy of what we are currently doing. The patent statutes and a copy of our adopted September 2021 investment policy statement. For her to look at and to get that and let us know whether we had the top here is how we would see it. So. She has been out of the office quite some time. I did manage to catch her in the office. I had to leave with her assistant. She was at a client meeting. So she has her current occupation. Waiting for some feedback to see where we might or might not. It will be found. And we did have one lingering question hanging out with regard to using your jobs. I think there may be a resolution to that. Either so, I will be back to you what it is. I have a respect for some local advisor. That what I have given personally, you know, the package is how they would propose to handle the account. And he has used a hypothetical $1 million. It just makes it easier to see percentages. The actual account is about three, somewhere in there, billions maybe. So there's two parts, there are two big parts. One part, assuming it was Donald January 1st, $20 billion and not touch, nobody going in, nobody coming out, will be balancing. The other package is supposed to be balancing. And if you follow that all through, you see what the A scenario or the B scenario look like at the end of 22 years. I'm going to try and get something similar from zero point. Just so you can compare apples to apples. That's where we are right now. What is rebalancing? So Jones had indicated that if they were going to do business with the library, that we had to use mutual funds, no stocks, no bonds, no tips, no exchange credit funds. And that the account must be in a ratio of basically two thirds stocks, not mutual funds and one third on mutual funds. It's actually a 65, 35 mix. Okay. Now, over time, stocks will outperform bonds. So the 65 number over time will start creeping up. And they'll be curious like this past year, where that number will go down. So rebalancing is the act of taking that overage and slicing some of those dollars off from the stock side and repositioning them on the bond side or vice versa. In the packet you can have the disabled rebalancing at the top of the first page. That illustration set to balance once a year. And I, on the investment policy statement, frankly, regardless of who go with, it needs work. There are some pieces in there uh, that are missing, and at least one piece I have detected that is incorrect as stated. So that ought to be in the gen title for a bit of homework. So what are these capital group? All right. Capital Group is a very large, very old mutual fund family. Their oldest fund goes back to nineteen thirty-four. Every fund that is used in this example has a lifespan of at least twenty-two years. So there's no county company lease to this mix. And in fact, one of the stipulations with Jones was that if we were going to do business with them, we could not use any fund that had a life of less than, I think it was seven years. That's not applicable in the illustrations that I have given you. So the capital group has multiple funds. They have offices around the world, Europe, and they're in Apple Hill, Far East, South America, a couple of spots here in the United States. Very old, very respected, um, fund family. And one of the interesting features about them is they are a high-end old family. In other words, if they see a fund pair, let's say a stock they like, they buy it and they tend to keep it, which means they have very, very low operating cost compared to their peer group for the same kind of fund. So all of those are the kind of things what we hear from Cedar Point. Uh, we will have some basis for holding up apples, apples versus the apples and oranges.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions?
So we're waiting to hear the resolution. Um, I did speak with, uh, the library's attorney, Joshua Booster, um, last week, and he has given an answer. So that answer should filter over to us and then we can consider going action.
Exactly. And as I said, we do have something, we'll say pending, but on our challenge, and if Kent cannot hurt that on that yet, I will call him up.
Thank, thank you for all your work. Um, let's look at the first half of the fiscal year twenty statistics. Um, that's the, a page in the packet that has lots of colors on it, some spreadsheet. Um, Sarah, who does this for us, has provided that month by month. I'm primarily interested in, for today, just in looking at the first page and doing a comparison of the second quarter of fiscal year twenty, the second quarter of fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and you'll see, um, looking at the quarter, that in terms of the circulation, um, we divide that into two parts. There's the overall circulation, including the rules. Then there is the original circulation, the first time checkouts. And you'll see that in a trend, uh, um, we don't really want to see that for the quarter, those were down on the previous year. Um. Uh, and that's our print and our disk materials. Um, digital is broken up separately as our little hotspots. Um, and for the year, um, to date, however, uh, except for Charlotte Hall, which is down two percent on the year, we, we are up across the board. So for the year so far, we're up three percent in circulation. I'd like to see that number higher as the version of the pandemic. And that's something that will be continued to work on. Um, if you look at the mobile hotspot circulation, that kind of goes up and down, but, um, it's so small that it's a relatively small portion of the total. And that's something that we really get all that worried about. But we do have a number of hotspots for people who may not have broadband access, who, and they can check those out. The digital circulation kind of was looking interesting, uh, in this report. Uh, it is, uh, for the quarter, twelve percent, and up in year thirteen percent. And the reason why I say it's of interest is if you look at that growth, it's going to raise, uh, for the quarter and for the year, the overall circulation. This is kind of the first time that we've seen digital occupy quite such a high percentage of the overall circulation budget. So we know it's coming. It continues to grow and become more popular. The issue with it is that we don't necessarily get the bang for buck out of digital that we do out of our, for the print circulation. Um, we are working to try to change that. I got a number of texts yesterday of apparently kind of money ran the F R segment featuring this discussion again, uh, which I played a part. So, um, it's going to be an uphill struggle, um, as publishers who have lots of money in, um, but we are working and trying to get better deals for libraries. Uh, this month, New York and Massachusetts should boom, put bills into effect like one that Maryland passed. But we've learned from Maryland's lack of success with this, um, we did pass into a law and so far the only state that did that, they build, uh, will try to give libraries a better shape. Um, I won't go into details now, but if you ask me offline, we'll talk about all of that. But basically, we are doing our best to, um, um, this, this right up here, to try to get a better. So overall, um, circulation, we'd like to see better in our physical formats, but our digital is exploding. And our problem with it is trying to manage the funding, especially in service called hoopla, which every time somebody checks up, like it does, they is setting the expensive enough that it's difficult for us to be able to, um, afford it. Um, um, for the um, very nice growth for the sort of quarter in our in-person events, as you see, and obviously, last year, this time, we're still struggling with the pandemic and are, are back to that. So we don't mind if some of our, um, virtual events aren't up there as much because we're finding that nearly that we could add into the library. People in the library who have advanced self-tribe circulation, they go to the library checkout box. So, uh, we're very happy about that growth. Um, and, um, some nice growth in in-person attendance as well as a number of events, and our outreach is growing as well. And so getting out of the community, we're starting to see more people coming back to community events as well. Uh, meeting revenues not surprisingly up, um, and that's another way that we certainly get people back into the library. And on the quarter, visitors up across the board, which is good. And overall, up, um, with Charlotte Hall being slightly down here. So, um, we, we look at these just to kind of look trends in library use. Uh, you see on the next page that computers tend to be, uh, growing at Charlotte Hall. It is, uh, Letter Town a little bit, Lexington Park now. Um, and if you look at the very bottom, you see the tri-county circulation figures, um, uh, you'll, you'll note that, and this is something that we are, um, hoping to maintain at St. Mary's County, and that is our three libraries circulate more than the other two counties, even though they each have four branches at local libraries. So, um, what we're seeing, and we'll note that we wanted a presentation, is that, um, they are closing the gap and recovering a bit faster after the pandemic. Um, we think that in part has to do with, um, their increased, uh, um, ability to do programming over what we can do with their much higher budgets with Calvert having six point six million and Charles having seven million dollars total budget as opposed to our slightly over forty dollars. When you've got the staff, you do more programs, you get people back in the library, so there's a gap, uh, we know is there. We're still the circulation leader. I'm sorry, Calvert, Charles, while I crow a little bit about something. Uh, but, uh, we are seeing them come back quicker, so we hope that we can address that as an issue. Questions so far about the circulation statistics, certainly, for the visitors. Generally, except for being slightly down in, um, the print circulation, with this circulation, where we are looking at a nicely increase in use and very happy about that. Yes, question?
Um, let me just commend Sharon for appearing at this meeting in two media forums. That's very impressive. Thank you. It's great to have you in person. Um. Michael, I, I think when I look at the tri-county circulation data, it is really striking to me that between quarter two and last two years, that we're, we've been completely flat at zero percent. That's Calvert's up nine percent and Charles up twenty-one percent. So that, that's definitely pretty alarming.
Yeah, um, they, as I say, and, and, um, we presented that last month as well, um, but we'll look at briefly this time when we look at our budget, it is that we, we sort of look and see why, um, when we have maintained actually a larger median circulation over the years, are, are we kind of flat and they're not? And that's sort of what we can identify as a factor here. Um. If you've got more full-time staff, if you've got more, more staff period, you can do more programming. You could bring more people into the library now. And that's about the only thing we're seeing that can be identified. Yes, go ahead.
They also have funding for additional, uh, services such as, um, canopy, which is movies online, um.
Pre-COVID, pre-COVID.
Music online. I think their collection budget is by far larger than ours. And they have more hoopla checkouts because they're inputting money into that, so that's.
I think you would have to be careful, sharing COVID years at any level. Think you might have to go back like five years, pre-COVID, and see if they raised for that time. Perhaps we were open for it, which I think maybe people were accessible in Charles. Maybe if people come out for it, they didn't. Um, I think using a COVID years event, it's very, very, I probably wouldn't trust that. Go back these five years. Were they always ahead of us? Will we always ahead? And, and things like that. This is not a good measure.
Traditionally, we were always ahead, um, and by a large percentage, as we're seeing now. Uh, we simply know that in comparison to the COVID year, for all of us comparing traditionally. Um, so if you want to compare our statistics to pre-COVID, um, I think it's the case for libraries across the country, really, we're going to struggle to get back to pre-COVID numbers overall. Um, that's, you know, many libraries were closed for a longer period of time than St. Mary's. We actually were open as much as any library in the whole state, um, during the COVID period and far more than, say, Charles was. But last year, Charles was open fully. So we are at least doing apples-to-apples comparison. If you look at, uh, the three libraries, we're open last year at this time. Um, the one area where we have that, um, they don't is that Lexington Park continues to remain open on Sundays. Although that was not the case last year at this time. I think a year later, was it that one? And we opened, yeah, January of last year. So that quarter wasn't included in that. The other thing they have going for them, which we hope will close the gap on, is they've got multiple local libraries in those two counties. So, um, that could be another reason they're closing the gap. Uh, circulation doesn't tend to be that obvious. So we are looking at several factors here, but no matter what, it'd be, you'd see that the budgets are certainly moving in the process.
Can I ask one more question about the visitors to Charlotte Hall is down twelve percent from the last year? Do you have any thoughts about what might be behind that?
In part, that's going to be because we no longer have the, um, the, uh, market there. Um, and so some of those visitors, which were being counted as, as they came in the lobby, would simply be people using the market and coming in lobbying, using the best facilities and things like that. Um, so we're probably not doing the apples-to-apples comparisons there. Um, we'll have to look at next year, now that the market's not there, um, what that figures are going to be. And, and other than that, I don't have any explanation for that. I will say that, um, the four-year Charlotte Hall does have county money set aside for renovation. It is very much overdue. Um, I think the facility, um, needs a refresh. And seeing that, uh, I think that you will see, um, visits go back now. I think the collection is solid there. I certainly think the staff is solid and probably impactful there. Um, I do think that, um, compared to our other two buildings, certainly, um, it's not, uh, as, um, modern as both of itself, and it, and it needs to be addressed that way. All right, well, speaking of budget, let's move along to that. And you'll see that we have fifty-two percent of the year passed so far. And basically, for those of you who are new, what we're looking for are sort of areas where we seem to be doing okay in terms of our personnel services. Good two fifty percent of the year, uh, elapsed, and forty-nine percent of the budget spent were okay, certainly there. Um, health insurance, uh, is slightly higher, but that will, will be a wash for the years over, we're hoping. Um. So telephone and electric. You see it broken down by budget line. So you see that electric costs have gone up, water, super cash costs have gone up, gas costs have gone up. So practically, all of our utilities are higher than were anticipated. And the dollar amount is not necessarily all that much, which is good news. But when we look at the budget for next year, uh, they will be improving the budget request later on today. We'll, we'll have to make adjustments in those areas for next year. And before the year's over, we'll have to try to look and see if we've got any areas where we haven't spent out or we can transfer funds to make sure that the budget lines stay positive. Um. Other than those, um, our digital collection, our digital collection contracts and program services. Basically, we're struggling to pay for the amount of programming that we do. Um, we will rely on part of the friends to help with that, um, but it is still something that, um, we are finding that costs have gone up, uh, bringing people in to do programs or provide supplies, whether they're more expensive than were anticipated. Um. Because the local library has been delayed, we'll have some funding there. We see that we had set aside money for that, that we could use in other budget lines for this year, but we'll talk about that in a second. Um. Questions that you might have about any of these?
And it's, uh, the mobile library. Yes, do you have it final or?
Uh, yes, I was going to give you an update on that, but we can go ahead and do now and answer your question. So we heard, uh, unfortunately, uh, in October, when we were hiring staff, expecting December delivery date, that the, uh, local library has been pushed back. And the delivery date to the Eastern Shore where the finishing is not going to happen is slated for late April. And the event should be here in early June. Um, we are meeting with the firm that is doing the finishing. Unfortunately, this is out of their control, or this is happening nationally. It's due to supply chain issues. Um, and so the delays have happened. I, you could probably heard that the car industry is down on the bottom market because they're not able, especially to get computer chips to deliver, to put the vehicles together. Same thing happening with, and these are custom assembled vehicles. So the factory hasn't finished the vehicle yet. And we will, as I say, we're meeting with them in about two weeks. Uh, they're coming here to talk about progress. And we really want to hold them as much as is possible to that as a firm delivery date. Um, it's been pushed back now a year, and I don't think that this firm is responsible for that. I think it is. It's been pushed back now a year, and I don't think that this firm is responsible for that. I think it is the original construction of the vehicle itself. But those certainly should be developed. And while not giving that, I will say that we did hire staff anticipation of the vehicle being ready in December. They are doing an outstanding job getting out of the community and making new partnerships, especially with some Hispanic speaking groups and getting onto the base. And I'm anticipating next month, you think you have much more detail before about some of their activities. But they are meeting among other things with the food pantry. And so we're looking at places to take the mobile library. And that is one spot because they say that the food pantry, they struggle with not being able to buy something. So if we could pull, say, once every two weeks, the mobile library there, turn on the Wi-Fi, people will know the time they could check out books. They could also connect devices there. So we are looking at expanding services and we're simply waiting to get that that vehicle itself to be on the road, but our staff are very energetic and doing a lot of working new partnerships. So I think it's going to be just a great experience for the county.
That first year, if staff are traveling around the county, is that their travel expenses, are they coming out of the mobile library fuel room or are they coming out of somewhere else in the budget?
No, they would come out as the van goes places. I think right now. Right now, we don't pay mileage for being out in the community. That's not something they've got a budget line for.
They are using the library van to travel.
Oh, yeah. So so when that happens, then we for the library van, it's a different budget line is the fuel line, which is on. Right, yeah. So that comes down to that. We don't make them drive new vehicles such as possible, but yeah, so what's your second question?
My second question is, if you're expecting delivery in June, and this budget looks like it holds over some kind of summer, are you planning to preserve these items if they aren't taken in earlier delivery? Or are you planning to use them before with a June delivery of the day?
So we do hold over on July one. We will not be able to use all of those funds before July one. Sandy, who is our new mobile library outreach coordinator, and I have been speaking, so she'll use a little bit of the materials fund to buy a few things for the outreach that they are currently doing. Because they've already started story times at some of the elementary school and on base, so they need some supplies for that. But the plan, at least tentatively, because it has to be approved by this board, is to take at least half of that fuel money and move it into our programs department because we are at nine, nine percent of that budget used and the rest of the year will have to be used by friends of library funds. We'll preserve half. And then at the very, that last month, depending on when we get it in June, we'll see how much of that we can transfer to some other departments too. We'll preserve some of it for that last month if we get it. But for the most part, we'll have to move those funds into other budget lines so we can spend it because it does not roll.
So just to give you a complete picture about the mobile library, it was originally funded with a $250,000 grant. Expenses have gone up, so it's going to cost about $317,000. It was always going to be a little more than $250,000. Things to delegate Brian Crosby, we have an additional $50,000 from state. And our foundation has been raising money primarily based upon the needs of the mobile library. There's about $80,000 sitting there. Whether or not that's going to, those amounts are going to cover the $2,000 left by $250,000 grant, all of the remaining expenses, the library, including its collection, its computers, the stuff, the set of Wi-Fi. I don't know. We may have to fit into our fund balance to finally pay that off. The good news is the vehicle should be very robust and not require less maintenance over the years. So we are going to have to look very carefully about how you finish paying for it, but we do have some additional funding that should cover most possible. And we should thank the county for granting us the two positions that do allow us to staff. Other questions about the budget? Okay, you don't have to approve that. It's more disinformation. Our friends and foundation updates. The friends do have a brunch coming up. It's optional. You don't have to attend. That's on January twenty first at ten thirty AM. It's at the Episcopal Church on Route Four, which is St. Andrews Episcopal Church, yeah. And they do a very nice job. There will be a presentation there from somebody from the Marine Museum and the Marine Institute over in Calvert, and they're going to talk about the food crowd population. So that will be an interesting presentation and you can come out and meet some more offensive library members. And you can buy tickets for that on the library's website. If you look on the far right under the about us tab, drop down the offensive library page. And if you can't find it, you won't pretend. I think it's $30 a person, letting them low range it for you. They are going to be moving forward with their book sale in late March and they are meeting this evening. I'll be going to their meeting this evening, so I can give you more information about that. The foundation did have a record year for fundraising, but in part that was because of one extremely large and generous donation of $50,000. So we have a letter writing outreach and a lot in several thousand dollars, but I think we need to look at the foundation, what it's doing and consider first of all, working to get the possibility for a stock donation for the foundation. And secondly, to think about some new activities that the foundation could engage in. I would say that COVID did take some of the window sales out of the foundation. We've been leveraging, but we have to have it dense. So we'll be moving forward on that and the foundation will be giving the business of to talk about possible future directions. I've given you the mobile library update already. Everybody that has a copy in front of them, the laws are fairly relating to public libraries, the 2022 edition. That is exactly what the title says. And a lot of them are necessarily applicable to St. Mary's County. There's things in here for the state library. There's things in here where the regional library associations like Smurla. There's things in here related to different state programs like the depository distribution program. But the laws for public libraries are of interest to us. And when I've been meeting with a couple of newer trustees, I thought over a couple of those. I guess I just say that you certainly don't have to memorize this, but there will be occasions where they refer you to it for things that are to our county. And there will be a couple of new laws that are being proposed for the upcoming session. And I will give you a deep update on those once the bills themselves are in, we can see exactly what they're going to say. We occasionally do look at these laws and think about amendments or clarifications of that process will probably go in on this year as well. So again, you don't have to memorize these. It's just that they provide very useful information to you and occasionally we'll refer these to these. We were making decisions.
Michael, I think with Jen's departure, one of us needs to get training on the open meetings law.
Probably several of you do and I do as well, but there is Open Meetings Act training that's available online. I can send you a link to it. Basically, there's all kinds of rules in place for how you conduct your meetings. And St. Mary's County actually has an even more strict Open Meetings Act than the state itself does. So it's useful to know that. There's a few things, for example, at the state level that you can declare a closed session for, that you cannot for St. Mary's County. So there's things for St. Mary's County that you could close a meeting for. For example, did it last month when the trustees reviewed my performance for the year and did my performance evaluation. So for things related to personnel, for things related to some security, or things related to investments, in some cases you could close a meeting of this board, but there's many others where you basically have to conduct all your your meetings in public. And so you can get training and have certification that you have the Open Meetings Act training well set.
And there are some differences between the two policies. Where would we be best advised of?
But we would, we'd better follow St. Mary's. Yeah, yeah. Just as I say, there's not that many differences, but there's a few that you can close a state board for that at a state level that that other libraries would do that in St. Mary's. It's even more restrictive.
And so their restriction.
Yes, yeah, we want to, we want to make sure that we're in line with St. Mary's and more strict guidelines on open meetings. And basically, it's just primarily a question of how you conduct your business, but also when you can close it. One person does not yet have a board effect of this report, but I think everybody else does. That one person, I don't think you've got one yet. So I will give this one to you. And it's something for you to think about. This was done last year with a grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which is a federal agency which gives away money to libraries and the Maryland State Library. And they just surveyed the different library boards and looked at demographics and effectiveness about what the kind of overall powers of a board are, about issues with medication, effective work practices. And I don't know how many of you, you know, longer, longer term members responded to this survey, but we shared with you. And I think it might be interesting for you as a board to take a look at the results and talk about any future directions you might want to take in response to that. So that would be something for you to consider for next month or the month after. Just give people time to get through the report and because.
I would like to talk about this report at our February meeting. I think it would help us function, you know, in our support of the library and our function as a board together. So if you do have time to take a brief look at this or skim it, that would be great for us. And Michael, I'm thinking as we wrap up your informational items, perhaps begin at a five minute recess before we move into the action items. I'm sure you mentioned this.
And the next one would take very long. I did provide you with a list of goals for the library director for the upcoming year. New board members. The library director is the one position that does, does not have some protection in the Maryland trade of laws. I served at your will and you hire the director, you assess the director and you terminate the director and I have no reason to do basically other than legal, but I hope you decided not to do that last night. I'm enjoying my job. But I did want to, as part of a new direction in evaluating the director, to give you some specific goals on which you might assess the director for the upcoming year. And it's difficult in some ways to tell the performance of the director apart from the library itself. Since the director on an operational level is ultimately responsible for everything. So, you know, there's some personnel issue, even if it's not somebody reporting to me, it's still my problem. It's still my lookout. But I tried to set out some specific goals and I tried not to make too many that I would like to try to achieve this upcoming year. And then some general ones that I'd like to see somebody in my role doing. The first is to oversee the fiscal Y twenty four budget process and that's something that the library director is charged with by state law. But this is going to be, as we'll see in a couple of minutes, a very different kind of year. And so I feel like we'll be doing some things a little differently than we have in the past at times. So I'd like that to be something that you do look at my proposal and again, there's going to be plenty of other people working on this, not just me. But I do think it's something that we should keep in mind as something the director would like to see happen this year. It is time for us to do a new strategic plan. We did one that was approved by this board in January of twenty nineteen. Guess what happened in March of twenty nineteen? Yeah, so that strategic plan is actually still quite valid in many ways because it is more gentle. It sets overall direction. And although obviously the pandemic severely disrupted operations in every possible way, the overall views that strategic plan puts forth, I think, are still quite valid. Nevertheless, I think it's time for us to do a new one. I will be doing an RFP. You can have these things outsourced and the last one cost about $20,000. We can get a state grant to cover at least half the cost. So I'll be looking at an RFP. If the costs seem feasible, we may submit a state grant to do this. It is something that people at every level, including you, would be involved with. So the board's impact to do this and we would ask the board in some cases to interview community leaders with specific questions about the library. So and the result might end up in a strategic plan that is not much different than the one we've got. But we do, I think, need to have, want to make sure that we're keeping that fresh. Did you have a question? We did, yeah, yeah. And we would be doing a community survey this fall. In any case, we've gone back alternating between staff surveys one year, three year surveys the next. So it just seems like an opportune time to wrap that into the strategic planning process. And you know, if we come back with RFPs saying it'll cost you $40,000, you know, we may say, okay, we've done one on our own before. We can probably do one on our own again, but this is something I think we need to improve the upcoming year. Related to that is a tactical plan. For the past couple of years, we've kind of just been fairly loose and done things as we've been able to. A tactical plan is different than a strategic plan and then it sets out specific things we're going to do with measurable goals. And we haven't done one for a number of years. Before I got here, the library kind of combined a strategic and tactical plan. But I just get back to having a tactical plan of things that we specifically wanted to do. And all of that will be involved with working towards that and we're probably looking at July for the implementation of that. It would just for the upcoming fiscal year, set out specific things. You know, and it could be even, all right, if we want to add a program, we're going to have to drop something. Where we just kind of focus, and that's not to say it's set, so you have to do it so much as I think it gives us nice goals, measurable goals for us to look at ourselves as a library for the upcoming fiscal year. Obviously oversee the mobile library implementation and ensure services by nine, twenty twenty three. I believe like it on the road, doing lots of things by then. Reputer is dumping and putting in legislation, a new version of the ebook law that did not meet a constitutional challenge from the publishers in twenty twenty two. in twenty twenty two. I've already drafted a new version of that law. We do have the American Library Association's Council view of that. We have a law that we think will pass constitutional muster. Right now, we're starting to build a website to try to get the word out to the public and build information or build public awareness of the problem that libraries face with digital. I'd like to ensure implementation of our palace app. That is a app that has all of our overdrive content in addition to past content of the Digital Public Library of America that is branded for us. And we've had it for a number of years. We've just never made it public. And I think it's time either to make it public or to sunset it. We do get state funding. We're the kind of the pass group for the whole state to develop that app, and currently there's eleven counties that have that in the state. So I think we want to, this year, finally, put that forward. We've been working to Overdrive has been taking out one of their apps, one called Overdrive, and people, what they call D B N. As part of that process, we may be implementing our palace app. And finally, something that, that John is working, might as well investigate options for the O P E A management, the change necessary maybe for the end of next year. So specific things that I think are already in my purview. Or generally, I'd like to see our circulation overall increase five percent, or if I should say over calendar year twenty twenty two. We're working to try to build that up. Assistant advisor to friends of the library, the foundation. Both are facing some challenges right now, and I'm going to hear more about this going on with the friends this evening. And so I, I think that this may be a near transition for both those organizations, or certainly a retrenchment. So we'll be seeing how best the library can help those groups who helped the library so much. I'll obviously advise you. And then I'd like to continue being on the community as I am right a bit, just getting library book out there. So those would be my specific goals. I'd like you to assess me on for twenty twenty three. If you've got anything you'd like to see, obviously you have a second that too, so we can talk about that separately. No, I think it's time to.
Before we do, any questions or comments on the director goals that Michael is proposing here?
On the top portion of your the legislative volume, just one, two, three. Are you talking about at Maryland level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Federal legislation is going to be very difficult to get. The publishers have well-funded lobbyists. For example, when Maryland passed its bill into law, Senator Chaliso of North Carolina went on the attack against Maryland. Even though it's not his state and he has nothing to do with it. We know how much money he gets every year from the publishing lobbyists. That's going to be a tough ask, and the reason why we're working so harder to stay low, currently there's twelve states with some interest, and at least two this year, possibly, where this year will put laws forward. New York, Massachusetts, Trump was definite. Rhode Island and Connecticut are very, very probable. Maryland would be not this year, but a year from now. We're ramping up towards it again. Is to try to, if you have enough states with laws in place, the federal government almost has to take a look at it. And we would like a revamp of the copyright laws for libraries in the digital world. Currently, they're almost all based on a law that came out in the early two thousands, the Digital Running of Copyright Act. Where I'll just say libraries got rolled. Maybe we're at the table, but run over, which is why the publishers can do some of the things that they're able to do that they cannot do under copyright and printed libraries. So ultimately, a federal law, I think, is going to be necessary. It's going to be a long time coming. I might not be alive. But we're going to start looking for.
I have a question. Your timelines or your strategic plan and your tactical plan kind of overlap.
They are.
Or tactical plans are based on your strategic plans, or are you thinking for next year?
We'll probably be basing it on the current one, but I don't, I'm not anticipating huge changes in the strategic plan for next year, but we'll probably sort of look at what would be simply live on a tactical level to be doing. And it could be things like something that's a long time coming. Revamping our children's programming so that we've got one presented rather than two. And just kind of find this kind of thing in what we're going to do as a miserable goal.
End of the bullet point number seven. The packet that I passed out in American funds, I'd like to mention that each fund illustrated has its own summary perspectives. That's what the eight little things behind the two big fat things are. So as we come, go ahead.
John, do you want something?
To ask, I know the palace app is available now, so what will be happening? Is there more content available?
What will be happening would be if we were to roll out the public and say, okay, here's your new app. It already has some content that does just give me out. There's, among other things, ten thousand free titles that have been submitted by the Digital Public Library of America. There is some content we've had there for the Digital Public Library of America's market exchange, and so it puts all that content in one place. And we are working with talent to integrate the content from hoopla. I think that's a good to hear out, but we're hoping that's going to be a plus for all of our digital content.
I have two comments about these goals. The first is about the the typical on developing the legislation, the new version of the ebook law. I might look at that as not a goal that is directly related to St. Mary's County libraries, right?
I could agree with you on that. Yes, it is.
Can you unpack that for me?
Sure. We've already talked about the difficulty of providing visual content and how much it costs. This is aimed directly at reducing that cost. Now, it's not just St. Mary's County library, but is it St. Mary's County library? Is that what it might be, your motivation for wanting to see it? Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Secondly, should there be a goal relating to staff retention?
I I struggle with that one because I don't know how much of it's specifically on the director. Would I add that under a general goal? Yes. Is that something that I can control? We can create the best workplace, and already when people leave, and incidentally, as you you'll see perhaps a little company, new trustees, we've had forty percent staff turnover last year. People leave the library and generally say how much they like working here, how beneficial they feel it has been in serving the community, that it's a good workplace. But we can create the best workplace in the world, but if we're not paid competitively compared to the other libraries in the area, if we're not paid competitively compared to McDonald's and Target, we certainly, we're never going to compete with the base in the contract. You come here, work a couple of years, build a resume, and go work with the base, which three times would be bad here. We can't do that, but I, I don't know without achieving this first goal that staff retention is going to be something that any of us have direct control over. So I feel like we could add that as a general goal, and if we'd like to do that, I certainly feel just feel like it's not something that's completely within the organization's.
That's completely fair, right? And nor could you increase circulation by five percent except by checking books out all the time, perhaps.
Well, that's what I'm going to be doing is I'm upping my reading this year. Now, I, I think that's more related to our marketing plan and putting out displays or and updating programming, which again is a part of it being based on that very first budget point, or that very first one point here. I don't have any direct control over it, but I think that we can foster behaviors that may help bump that up, yeah.
And I, I just think that retention needs to be at the top of mind.
Right, well, in that case, I could go ahead and add it. I do think that it's not a decision people make easily, but you know, if you've been here for two years, a decision opens that caliber, that is your safe job, and it pays twenty thousand dollars in the board if what you think about it.
I suggest, there may be other topics when we look at this list that come to mind. I would encourage all of the trustees to think about is there anything that I would add to this, and we'll bring that forward next month for discussion or discussion. Or that kind of thing.
And happy to have you do that because you're the ones who give the assessment and create the assessment and do that. You, you get to choose. I, I simply, I was asking for a general list of things that I thought were important to accomplish for the year, and if you want to add to that, then you will.
John, that's a good idea. Thank you. So we'll revisit this in February. All right, why don't we take a few minutes break? Do we need to make a motion to do that? We're going for ten minutes, should be complete. All right, left thirty five. You want a second? Thank you, John. All of them are. All right, any posers stand? Okay, stay in ten minutes.
So you have to because I was just in front of that. Because he's not, because he doesn't have, because he's not library certified, I'm like, look, he's like, literally. Right. So I went, they don't have a spot for that, so, but, but I do have the rules, so I can but they, they, sorry, I'm going to come up again, but I'm pretty sure so they don't let security. Right.
Do we know exactly if you think this piece of it has security?
No, I don't, I didn't have a chance to go through that one. I did, Michael, I looked at our profit and loss from last year. Because this is what the auditor should have been using, but if you do this, so taking out O P E A. With, with, with O P E A in there, this is our profit and loss. Not YouTube. Can you hear me? Yes.
I think you do. This is our company and boss.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we'll turn it back over to Michael and the action.
I got it.
Like to put off till the next month and next one with unbalanced distribution. Um, for new numbers, basically what we, we do on an annual basis is we look at what money came into the library and what money was spent and if we had a budget surplus or not. And we want to look at some figures internally. And we do not think that the audit is a good representation. By the time you take away depreciation, the fact that they're bringing in donations and grants into that amount. We want to present to you what we think is a realistic number and believe that I are still working on that. So we will get that sheet next month. Um, and it's very complicated and has to do with auditing practices and how QuickBooks factors things. We think that the auditors may have double counted some money coming in. So we are trying to track that down, but we will have it accurate in the period next month and we'll explain how we derived it. And at that time, um, you as a board make a decision if there is a budget surplus. And we don't know that there is going to be one. Um, you decide if there's something that you would like to do with that budget surplus. So you could, um, put it towards the OPEB. And if it comes, if part of the surplus comes from something related to insurance, that is typically been our practice. Is say, okay, that was supposed to go to pay health insurance for current employees. We had a surplus, we will put that towards the retirement healthcare account. Um, the other option will be just to say, okay, we're going to include that in the library's rainy day fund. It's money that we have sitting there. In this case, it would probably be actually saying, we're going to spend that on the mobile library because we are going to have a typical rainy day fund, mobile life. I don't think there's any question about that by the time all is said and done. So we'll do that next month. Um, and I'm sorry that we did not, I was, we were speaking fully, um, for now. So let's move directly into the FY twenty four budget request approval. And I'll explain the accounting process to you.
Before we go there, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
At this meeting last year, January of last year, we learned that there was a rebate on our health insurance cost of about thirtyish thousand dollars. Did we have that same thing happen again?
No, I, I've not received any information. And if there is one, um, the county will let us know. What has also happened in the past is that the county has come and said, well, guess what? It costs more and we suddenly had to find here fifteen thousand dollars from somewhere. So, um, it, we, I, when we see that, I will let you know, but I have not received that information at all this year.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, you knew board members would not have had the benefit of seeing last month's presentation on this. So I've got a shorter version of it that I just like to go ahead and go through as a PowerPoint to explain the why of the budget request this year. Um, and can we collect PowerPoint up for people have in front of them that can always just walk through that way?
Um, okay, it will take me just a minute to get it.
Coming up, the national presentation has been.
Um, you mean to the county commissioners?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Um, no, I'm slightly, sorry, I can't get to that part right now. Um, the way the budget works, um, is the state money is written in state law. And there's a page in here where you see what the next several fiscal years are supposed to entail. Um, it is not strictly per capita. It's a very complicated formula. It includes, and I have no idea why, railroad miles within the counties. Um, and so it also, as a county relative to some others becomes wealthier, its share gets refused. So for the fiscal year we're right now, initially at this time last year, we were thinking the state was going to cut our budget. Um, they made some changes moving forward in our county officials of that thinking. Um, whereby we got about nine thousand more from the state this year than the prior year. From the state, that's about what we're expecting again. So in terms of the overall budget of a little over four million, nine thousand dollars, that's a whole lot. Um, so for the county, this Friday, I have to submit our budget request. And you're going to approve the amount today. And Michael, I will need at some point you to sign off on that. Uh, but you can do it digitally, um, just scanning the front page. Um, but you will approve that request today and or not. And if you don't, I will have to scramble. Uh, but, uh, then, and these dates are on your agenda sheet. Um, so on March twenty first, and this is typically about one o'clock in the afternoon, one of the month thirty days starts. Um, the library's budget will be reviewed by the county commissioners. And that time they sometimes ask me to come forward or you if you're there as well and to answer questions and sometimes they don't, they just say, here's what we're going to give the library this year. Um, April twenty fifth is a public budget hearing. And at that, members of the public, as that name suggests, are able to come out and advocate for funding of any particular sort they would like to see increased. Um, that's at Chalkerton High School would be at six thirty. Um, uh, by April, um, I think these dates are quite right. Um, that seems late for the budget of a hearing.
So on the instructions, those are the dates from the instructions, they may change though.
Okay, in any case, we've got about a week. Um, I've got about a week in order to make, oh, well, I said, April twenty sixth, budget appeals are due. After that public hearing, you're allowed to say, okay, we'd like to appeal your decision. And so we as a library board could say, we want you to do this. Those comments are due to the county by day, second, and then later day, they approve the budget. So that's kind of the process that we'll be going through, um, this upcoming several months. Um, so if we could just move to these slides then, I could go ahead and that'd be just a shorter version of what we did last week. Um, basically, um, the why of this, we are struggling at this point. And we talked about our staff turnover this year. Um, there is other things that would affect here. And I would say that this has been building over several years, as you'll see, but I think between the pandemic, um, inflation, uh, the rise in cost for materials, the rise in cost of programming, that we've reached a critical. So right now, um, other libraries in the area are offering other services that we're not able to, we're not able to provide as many programs and initiatives as we necessarily have with budgets. You know, with costs going up. Um, our materials budget is actually no more than it was seven years ago. And as you can well imagine, it's going to buy a lot less since going to digital terms, least a lot less. But digital use has grown up the last few years over twenty five percent. It's high. And it's almost impossible for us to permanently ship money out of print over to digital. Because now that we have the pandemic, at, at least becoming endemic, and watch out, I think very intensive pandemic folks, it's in county. Um, we can't necessarily strip the print budget, especially if it's buying less. And we know that there are people which is advantaged by the digital divide in St. Mary's County. So, um, we are having trouble keeping up our heating and cooling bills. Our furniture budget has not increased in seven years. So about ten thousand dollars, that will buy exactly one piece of furniture these days. Library furniture designed the last twenty, thirty years, it's very, very high quality. Um, so basically, um, we are running into problems running the library. Um, and our low salaries have created a high turnover. We have lost institutional knowledge and a high percentage of leadership has been spent on training new staff. So we are facing some challenges right now. Take a slide please. You can see, and some of this is directed by culture B. But basically, if you look since fiscal year twenty fifteen, when we had a slow rise up to twenty eighteen and then began to see a decrease. What they give the library in the county budget versus what the total budget the county gives. And what you'll see is that as the county budget has increased considerably since then, our share overall is now far less than it was. Our total amount slightly more, but we have very far kept from growing at that percentage rate, especially since fiscal year twenty nineteen. There is a reason for that and I would prefer to talk about it all. So if you look at the next slide please, you're going to see based simply on the amount of money that the county gave its own employees versus what they gave the library, a substantial difference in the increases. The total percentage increase for the libraries since during this, since twenty fifteen has been twenty five percent. That's, that's nice, that's very nice. I'm not complaining about that, except for the fact that if you look at what the county employees were given at almost fifty percent, the numbers are clear that what we've given substantially flags. Next slide please. So we get money from the state, is that filling the gap? And the answer is no. Um, we did in fiscal year eighteen or nineteen, get a little over fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's when they put some funding into place. But as you see, that decreased since over time. And this will be your twenty three, it's really about ten thousand dollars more.
Michael.
Yes.
Talk about the compression of the salary scale and that's a, a really good point to make as far as the, the, um, the market salary scale adjustment and COA.
I'm not going to talk about that, no. Um, this is a pretty dirty presentation. I will just summarize that, just say that what's happening is that minimum wage is going up. And it's getting to the point that our frontline employees, our life is associates are being paid slightly over what minimum wage will be. Now that's what our agents are going to be making. And our minimum wage keeps closer and closer to what we're paying librarians. So we're getting to the point where pages are making almost as much as our frontline staff does. And our, that frontline staff is not making much more than they were. So that the difference between librarians, which by their love require a master's degree or are associates which by their love require a bachelor's degree, is becoming less and less.
Michael, this line graph represents the change in state funding.
Yes.
Not the total amount of state.
Not the total amount of state funding, just the change, yes.
Okay. Change, I'll, I'll on this page.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that what we'll do is maybe put in the total amount of the state funding too. I mean, it's, it has grown over the last seven years. Um, but it is by no means closing the gap between what we were, if we had kept up with the county, they would call up or that's kind of the point of showing this.
I'm sorry, I'm still lost on this page. I can't get my, my brain around the line per dollars and the percentage just down below. So.
Okay, so this is, the line is the actual amount of increases in funding that we got from the state.
Increase?
Increases only, yes. Okay, so we, we got a twenty, certainly over twenty thousand in fifty, uh, it was year sixteen, went up to thirty in seventeen, we got about fifty two thousand, fifty three thousand in eighteen and nineteen, which allowed us to raise more full-time positions those years. Um, went down in twenty twenty one, twenty two and twenty three, as you see. And this is all just kind of based on, on the state funding formula.
Okay.
So those were the increases over what we received the previous year. And the total state budget is eight hundred sixty eight thousand dollars a year, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but this is the one, the commissioners are going to see that. Verify that.
Yeah, I will, we can, we can rebound the slide before we do that.
And before we go into the next one. Come back on very first slide. First bullet, first bullet is no new or increased services such as free group and the, and other services. I, I, I don't think we ought to do that unless there is some generic explanation of what that means. What is free group? Is it more workstations?
It's a database of music. Okay. And cash music. I, we can. Then we can, we can substitute for that digital service. Which is, can't look at those are.
I agree, tough statement. I was, this. I was, I was, uh, number one hole and inability to raise infrastructure. Inflation is killer to whole town. We input inflation is, is filling the whole county budget, but the library also.
And I would get back to notion of that. If the minimum wage where you basically don't even have to have a high school diploma.
I I need to see what that costs us in time and plus knowledge or or now hiring, interviewing, recruiting, trading people. Forty percent of your staff, that's an incredible loss. So I would rearrange these bullets to what's most impactful. And what's going to actually measure by. Um they know inflation's filling the whole county budget, but the library also.
And I would get back to notion that if the minimum wage where you basically don't even have to have a high school diploma. Is creeping up on somebody who is has to have by law at least a bachelor's. I think that's a telling point to not include.
I I I will say that in what is being presented to the commissioners, that is there. This is a shortened version of the PowerPoint just for today.
Okay.
Try to indicate to the board members where we are, what we have, what we are. Yeah, no, that I know this is just for today. That larger presentation is still intact now. I like the changes you've suggested, and in that we will make that, and that's going to be included in the budget packet. And on February fourteenth, it's definitely I'm saying, all right, it's maybe because any mechanic commissioners. Um that was sort of a tentative date. So these facts will be presented directly to them. Um assuming that we keep that date, but that presentation, that longer one is not. Um it it does have, for example, the salary position features, and that's just not something I wanted to cover today because we're already approaching noon here. Um so um in any case, um. I'll summarize the slides. You could be go ahead and uh so this is between fiscal year twenty thirteen. Um ten years ago and twenty twenty three, what our. Comparative budgets are. And you see that um print materials um is less than it was then. Now we've added some digital, but not as much. We have to have more substitute hours. Those are. People we call them when we have gaps in the schedule. Supplies less. Furniture equipment is the same. Um. Furniture and equipment for technology um as brands of uh staff development, we've got more money. We're trying to spend a bit more on programs. You can see it's not much more. So really, um these. Versions of the budget we're able to put towards these important items, when you factor in the increases in. The um other items, we're not able to kind of put as much into these items, which are important in terms of how they. Contributes to people coming into the library.
Michael, I think this slide will tell an even more dynamic story. If you do the comparison of like. Fiscal year twenty three dollars to show that you're doing more with less.
And I would suggest for a delta of only seventeen thousand dollars, if you factor in inflation. There's absolutely no growth in there at all, and maybe even moving backwards.
Correct.
I I would say that all these, I didn't take factor into the factors, yeah. Um. Uh this is the salary comparison for the three southern Maryland area libraries, uh St. Mary's. And we'll change these colors before we do the final version. You guys are a little close. Is the dark blue on the far left, Calvert is the um royal blue in the middle. And Charles is the yellow on the right. And these are what substitutes are paid. Those are people, as they say, you know, all right, we we need somebody to come in because if that's a person who's sick or vacation, we need to fill the gap in schedule. Library assistant, um and a librarian one. And you see that across the board, um we basically um are offering. Less, and those are power relates. Next slide, please. So this is basically what we're asking in terms of increases. You see the fiscal twenty year um request from the county, what we're projecting our expenses might be. And part of that is because there is money coming from other sources, you know, some state money will be given towards those expenditures as well. Um but um doesn't include the cost of benefits. This is just the straight salaries. It's not the insurance. Um. What we would like to ask for um is. A increase in the salaries and some new positions, a new library assistant at Charlotte Hall. A new librarian at Leonard Town, a new assistant here at Lexington Park, and a new mobile library. We've got two of the mobile library. Our concern, and they pointed that in, it's very nice and happy for that, but our concern is that if one person's mobile library is sick or. One person of mobile library is on vacation, I assume they're going to want to take a vacation at some point in the year. That would only have one person. We don't really want to roll the mobile library with just one. Um it's not impossible, but two are more ideal, um especially when we're doing programming of yet. So that's, and you see the increase or salaries that we wish to ask. If you look over the next slide, you'll see even with those increases. We won't have cut up with the total amount given to the county employees. Forty eight percent as opposed to fifteen, fourteen, four percent, but it's going to get us a lot closer. So basically, our argument on this, it's that the library funding has been low for six years. There is some money at hand in the county now. Um. I know, you know, the school system, they're wonderful. I I do regret a penny given to them, but over the last several years. Their budget increase, just their increase, has often been twice our total annual budget. And I believe it's time that the library receives some equity here. We have a new commission report, we hope they're going to agree with us. So the amount that we are asking you to approve is on a separate sheet. It is this revenue estimate, which is something that. It's submitted to the county itself on Friday. Um an increase in county funding up to forty six, so about one point three will give four. The state funding, we're anticipating being relatively flat. Um we have moved up the amount of refined damage and services based on what we're getting this year. Grants, grants, the only reason why I have ten thousand years, we actually have a ten thousand dollar grant that goes to staff development. We get other grants, for example, the ebook grant, which provides catalog sits for the whole state. It's not just for us. It's a pass. So it's forty thousand dollars, but that forty thousand dollars doesn't go to state, it's Charlie library. It gets spent on behalf of the whole state. So really, the only factor that is amount in or out of our budget, it's just a wash. Um donations and contributions, um we may get more than that, but we don't know from the friends. You know, for several years there, they weren't able to hold their book sale. And we don't know of the foundation, what community house or that is being anticipated, it's this much. And using about forty six thousand dollars of our fund balance, we put us at a total budget of going up to four point three billion this year. About five point six. So it's still be a million short of Calvert this year alone. Million and a half short of Charles this year alone, and there's certain increases. But getting back up there, and we will close the gap almost on what covered Charles are paying this year. Maybe not next year, but getting closer. So that's the amount we would like to approve. As the asking of the budget side.
There's been a lot to that, being a number we go forward with. I think we also ought to have some plan, some action plan to get parity over the next. At the time thing, three years. Otherwise, we're going to be chasing our tail forever. What is our plan to bear on the gap? So we're in the ballpark with these other um county librarians that that we're making use.
Well, we don't know that we're going to get anything here. Um and if we don't. We are already doing, I should say outreach to a number of community supporters and partner groups. Um to indicate that we're having a big ask and to ask for their support, especially at the public budget hearing. I think making noise is about the only thing we can count on. Um possibly. Maybe the cutting officials will come back and say, okay, you know, we we can't do that this year, but for the next three years. How about this? Now, there's no guarantee on that. Suppose next year there's a huge recession. And there's not as much money like that. Um what's the guarantee that we're going to be able to close the gap now? Um I I think we're working towards this year. Um. Future years, um if we simply in future years get what everybody else gets, we probably need to be satisfied with that. I don't know that we'll we'll get much more. Let's see what we get this year um in terms of a. You know, what what the library budget's going to be. I I think if we get an offer for three years. And usually about over three years, we want to say, well, could it be a little more to account for, you know, what's going to happen the next three years? But let's suppose we are given um a minimal amount of level. In the past, we haven't even necessarily always been given the tiny employees, as you see, that you saw on the one slide. If that's the offer back, then I think we need to call out our supporters to the public hearing. And I I saw it, it's not your letters to the end of them, from several, to several. Uh entities uh talking specifically about that, and I thank you for that letter. Making the public aware is going to be our primary responsibility.
Any vibe from that side of the government that they're hearing from people?
Uh not yet, but I think we need to, as I say again, to to. We're we're beginning to reach out already, and I think the first time that they'll hear more about it is if I get to present to them in February. But certainly by the time of the public budget hearing, we need plenty of people, and we are soliciting emails and letters to them. So we need to have a lot of response from my group supporters. So I do. Any other questions or comments about this budget request?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Salary. Orange already is right about that. At the bottom, the goal line says, St. Mary's County Library total increase twenty two percent. That salary increase in twenty twenty three, twenty four.
Yes.
Versus the capital of getting four point five percent.
Um. We, that's a projection. We we don't know.
It's about this budget.
Yes.
You know, that that would bring him up to perhaps to parapods. Um if you were counties.
It would, it would bring them close to this year's funding for Calvert and Charles. You don't know about next year's funding for public.
Are they on the same budget time schedule?
Yeah, they are. Everybody's on a fiscal period. Um no, they're, the the budget so process is already started in Calvert. They're part of the county government. Um so basically, the library is there to get what the county gets. So it's kind of a different situation for us. Um new trustees. Uh the library separated from the county in twenty fifteen. That was before I got here, so I don't know. The reason for it gives us some advantages. The advantages it gives us are that we don't have to go to procurement system to pay for something. We can bear our employees directly to that county system. We have control over our website and so all kinds of little things. But in terms of keeping up our employees with what the county employees got, you can see that I think it probably was far more disadvantageous. Or said plus advantageous, and I don't know why it happened. Um I will say that twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, I asked that county executives or any way that. We could go back and receive a a very uncertain issue, you know. So I think that's a proof of separation.
One other question. Uh Michael mentioned that a number of part-time employees. Uh so sad, is that actually return or and 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 how do we reflect that? Um it's like library salaries. Is that, you know, we look at a slide like this, so library salaries. Where are the part-time people in salary levels? And again, it concerns me today. Is part of the problem that is getting thirty or forty or fifty passes forty strategically, we look at. Increasing hours for forty, increasing monthly versus just have been increasing per hour. I don't know if that's something we can answer today, but um that's concerning to the trichotrop where we also have a large number of.
Well, um full-time at the library and the county as well as thirty five hours. And I most proposed raising it to forty for full-time. What was saying, um received with less than two, um replies from the staff, our full-time staff. Our our part-timers may not earn on average more than three hours, but they're eligible. It's way better careful about that because we don't want to be taking advantage of somebody and saying, ah, you're working without benefits. We've got a number of employees who were twenty one hours, employees who were twenty five hours. And what we've often done over the years, when we've got like the salary increases or the money increase for the state is saying, okay, this twenty hour slot. Is going to be a full-time slot, and we make it competitive. We don't just give it to somebody. Um so we've been able to to increase full-time employment the last seven years, which some of them are very pleased about. But we do have quite a few part-time employees, and there was a time. Many years ago, when a lot of the type slots were joined into the two and made part-time precisely because of benefits, but that's something that was important. So would this allow us to do more full-time employment? We certainly are looking at that. I I should point out that that if we were to get this amount of money, it's not just going to be salaries. It will go towards more money for materials for um for utilities. It basically is going to allow us to kind of close the gap on the complete libraries and some of the program as well. So that's not just salaries, although that's certainly something we're factoring. All right, um would anybody like to make a motion?
We've been weighed down, as we said, by the director, the uh county figure for. You know, fiscal year point four.
Thank you, John. Second. Thank you, John. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, all those abstaining. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh one more, I checked the item. Um you're possible voting, and I don't know to what extent you're about five times. Usually do. Um I've prepared a tentative meeting schedule for you. That's what things look like right now. Um but the prior board, when we started having meetings in our own spaces, opposed to having. And where the county office was, talked about the possibility of having a different time, different game for you meetings. And um so I wanted to um. Wanted to have you talk about that, if you don't give that time to spend. Sharon, I see your bigger sign on it.
No, I work open, and I think it's how they're having developed this now. So we can find one. Not in the business, but.
I I think, I think that uh it's not good, but even applying for the fourth job. How many people didn't apply for it yet to stick that job? So I tell them each third. It's time for the difficult I teach the evening. Um so I mean, I take time out of my work, but I'm aware of what you're saying. So I would, um what about kind of a compromise, have some during the day, some in the evening? Um that way you can kind of. Break it up a little bit and then, you know, keep it at when, like you a little bit bigger. Every evening, I I would help you a little bit.
About the evening. This is a really bad, me personally, but I mean, however, if we flex it around, it'd be something that would be helpful too. Um, different days, different comments, you'd be, you know, one or two funnel salary.
Well, with this idea of COVID, I would say before thirty.
That's what I was saying, obviously. Seven, a first debt, first, so like four, five, but I, I expected to. I might get you two, uh, some. Now, I don't need to, so that might be what we want to do, that's.
And early evening, just anything after five thirty is not, so, four thirty.
Or four. Because that might, a lot of the people have, have every other Friday off.
Yeah.
So it was needed at thirty, Friday afternoon, Swedish.
Why don't we chart that out, kind of on a matrix, some of the options. You'll get that, yes. Yeah, let, let's think about this, I think, uh, let's get some thoughts, what's can be good for you, I think, you know, you need to be mindful of. The library staff and personnel and our lives, yes, so let's, let's kind of map this out.
All right, so considering this technology support ship to wait, we, we will, we will mature in grad technologies, so. Um. We, we do have some different arrays for the board members, um, the library staff, they, um. Nominate, um, people to receive a, a word where they're recognized by the board of trustees, managers, and also do that. In this case, we have both sad and happy occasion, um. Sad occasion is that we, we did have an overdose here, I mean, happy occasions that staff are training. And by him, and he is as far as we can, well, um, so we have like a good parade to. Uh, Keisha Kellner, to Kathy Pavion. To Kimberl Fields. To Samuel Santana. To Jonathan Ford, also because of, and especially Rebecca Howell. It was through that, and. Predicting indecisive action and teamwork that provide the best stress and by medical personnel to see quickly. Working, again, you say this as a response, we're greatly prepared, of caring and very people that use, certainly not me. Should say that this is something the second one, that has ever happened, and this is not a hasty for the parents. But we're very grateful to the training of the health department, providing to our staff for, um, taking the initiative. Realizing that, uh, training, sorry, but they were how to use it, but they did, and thank you so much, and, and this comes from a, um. With a small stipend, it is not publicly funded, not likely. So, um, Michael.
All right, any final thoughts or questions or comments? We'll wrap up. Right, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, Ollie.